Yes, I am here.
Thank you. We are recording, so you may start.
Okay. I hereby call the special meeting order. And as we begin, Madam Clerk, I would ask you to please conduct the roll call.
Councilmember Becerra. Councilmember Mendoza. Councilmember Penyalosa.
Here.
Councilmember Sarmiento.
Here.
Councilmember Solorio.
Here.
Mayor Protem Viegas.
Here.
And Mayor Pulido.
And I am here as well. So with that, let me please ask everybody to stand. And I want to lead you all in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if you can remain standing, I want to ask Bob Barnett, our Police Chaplain, can you please give us our vocation this evening?
Yes. Lord God, what a privilege it is to be able to pray over these city council meetings, to pray over our city council members and our mayor. Lord, tonight, we ask a special blessing upon this meeting. We're thankful for their leadership through the very difficult year. And we pray, Lord, right now, in the name, your name, Lord God, that you would continue to bless them. As we look upon those, Lord, who will lead us into 2021, we ask that you would bless them, grant them wisdom and favor and insight for this coming new year. And, Lord, we're grateful for their public service. And we're thankful, Lord God, for all that they dedicate themselves to. And tonight, Lord, we're very mindful of the fact that we're praying also for our first responders. We're seeing the work of police and fire and paramedics, Lord, that are always on the front line in the midst of this very difficult season of pandemic. And, Lord, I want to thank you also, Lord, for the many years of being with Mayor Pulido. I ask a blessing upon him and upon his family. I thank you for his leadership. I thank you for his friendship, Lord God. And I pray, Lord God, that you would continue to bless our city. I thank you for our city and all that serve in any capacity to make our city great and wonderful. And, Lord, heal our land. We ask this in the name of the Lord. Amen.
Thank you for your kind words, Chaplain. And I, you know, you've done such a wonderful job for many, many years, and it's much appreciated. Very much appreciated.
Thank you, sir. Bless you.
Thank you. Bless you as well. Thank you for that. So now, Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers on this special item, please?
Yes, Mayor, thank you, we do. And we also did receive two communications by email before unmuting the callers. We did receive one from Dave Hohen with Darren Shippen congratulating the new incoming council. And also from Local 721 that came from Monica Suter, who's also on the call. And with that, the first caller we have here is Monica. If you would please dial star six to unmute your call. Thank you. You have three minutes.
Yes. Thank you, Clerk. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Monica Suter. And on behalf of the Service Employees International Union, Local 721 Santa Ana Chapter, thank you outgoing Mayor Pulido, Mayor Protem Viegas, and Councilmember Solorio for your service to the Santa Ana community. We wish you the best in your next chapters, along with health and safety to you and your families. We appreciate your service. To outgoing Mayor Pulido, your long-term legacy shown in the recent video shows your important contributions with the Artist Village Safety Improvement, innovative transportation and transit with the Orange County Streetcar, OCTA putting Santa Ana on the map as the county seat and on freeway signs that say "To Santa Ana" and with the Santa Ana Airport parentheses, S-N-A, parentheses, end designation. Thank you, Mayor Miguel Pulido. Your legacy is strong. Outgoing Mayor Protem Juan Viegas, you are the first council member most employees recall having walked through the various city work sites to meet the employees who provide who provide the, oh, hang on. Sorry, just a moment.
By the way, while you find that, Monica, I just want to say thank you for your kind words.
Oh, you're welcome. Yeah, and I apologize, my little internet connection just paused. Okay, I apologize. So, thank you, Mayor Pulido. You are the first council member, Mayor Protem Juan Viegas, who most employees recall having walked through the various city work sites to meet the employees who provide the ongoing service to your, to our community. We also appreciate your steadfastness and service and for speaking up based on your strong beliefs and values. Outgoing Councilmember Jose Solorio, thank you for your longstanding service, employee support, and for your work in elected office. It has also been great working with you with neighborhoods, on a variety of public works projects over many years, and during your time with OCTA. Thank you. And congratulations and welcome to the new mayor and council, new Mayor Vince Sarmiento, and councilmembers Ty Viet Phan, Jesse Lopez, and Jonathan Ryan Hernandez. We believe you all represent a great addition to the council and look forward to collaborative, to your collaborative spirit that you all bring along with your strong values of equity, service, and teamwork. We appreciate each of your support of our community, thank you, and your strong advocacy. We believe that the future will become even brighter now with your leadership. And new Mayor Sarmiento, we appreciate your longstanding service as a council member throughout the years and look forward to the additional progress that we believe will occur under your thoughtful, collaborative, and wise leadership that is reflective of our unique community. New Councilmember Phan, your service to the community already is appreciated. Along with your leadership competency and values, you add important diverse perspective to our council. Thank you. New Councilwoman Lopez, your impressive capabilities are appreciated in addition to your community service and your prior role and grassroots acumen with Santa Ana residents. Thank you. New Councilmember Hernandez, your work with Santa Ana to provide an organized voice along with your natural leadership is impressive, and we appreciate your support of our community. Thank you. To you all, welcome to the city council in your new roles, and thank you to the outgoing mayor and council. Thank you.
Thank you. The next Zoom ID is Michelle Martinez. Are the last four numbers eight four five? If you Thank you. You may begin to speak.
It is truly an honor to provide comment on this historic evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Two years ago, I said farewell and welcome new council members to this hiatus before I left. Tonight, we say farewell to Mayor Pulido after 34 years of service. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your contributions and service to the city of Santa Ana. Mayor Protem Juan Viegas, thank you for your service and dedication to this beautiful city. Councilmember Jose Solorio, thank you as well for your service and contributions to Santa Ana. Today marks a new story and dawn for Santa Ana. It is with great pleasure to welcome the new members of the Santa Ana City Council, Ty Phan, Jesse Lopez, and Jonathan Hernandez. I am beyond proud and honored to call my friend Vicente Sarmiento, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations on this new chapter and era. Those of us who carry a new story and who risk speaking, who risk speaking it have played a crucial role in times of historic shift in this city. I did so 14 years ago when I was first elected. I had a chance to tell a new story and bring in a new era that has made this day possible. We ushered in term limits for mayor and council districts, which allowed for us to have a new mayor after 26 years and council members who now represent residents and not special interests. Before a new era can come into form, there must be a new story. And the new story is here today by welcoming our new mayor and progressive city council. The playwright Arthur Miller noted that a known era has ended when its basic illusions have been exhausted. I would add that these basic illusions not are only exhausted, but have also have become exhausting in the city of Santa Ana. As they failed to produce results we wanted and essentially, we plunged ourselves into cynicism, despair, and inertia to protect the status quo. I believe that day is over and we are starting a new story in Santa Ana. I believe that Mayor Sarmiento and this new progressive council has an important theme to contribute to this new cosmic story. Each of you hold a story that is quite different from the dominant one of our time. I hope that in seeing that the great disparities between these two stories, you will feel even more strongly called to give voice to the new and the imperative to co-create with community, explore newness, and to reach out for relationships with others, to create systems that are equitable for all. Congratulations and best wishes to you all and best wishes to the outgoing mayor and city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers one four seven. If you would please dial star six to unmute your call or select your microphone unmute option on your device. Caller with the last three numbers one four seven. Please dial star six to unmute your call or select your microphone unmute option on your device. Thank you. You may proceed. Caller with the last three numbers one four seven, you may proceed.
Person en el teléfono con los tres últimos números, uno cuatro siete. Si puede hablar.
Oh, hi. This is Belinda Guillen. And actually, I'm just wanting to participate in listening to this meeting because I'm interested in hearing the new members that are coming to the city of Santa Ana. So I welcome them. And also, thank you to the mayor that is leaving and also the other members party that also are leaving their seats. And they're giving it to the new members that are coming into the new era that Santa Ana is going to be going through.
Thank you. Caller with the last Caller with the last three numbers one nine six. Please dial star six to unmute your call or select the microphone unmute option on your device. Caller with one nine six.
Hi, good afternoon.
Oh, yeah, go ahead. You may proceed.
Okay, hi. Good afternoon. First of all, I just want to thank the coming in members of the council. It's been an honor to work on Vicente Sarmiento's campaign and briefly for Jesse Lopez. I'm just a resident community member, and I just wanted to speak on behalf of the people that I know, the people that I've been working with. It's definitely a time for the city to take a deep breath, finally, after being in such a state of urgency. You know, it's been a really hard place for the city, and I just wanted to speak personally to all the members, especially the new members coming in. Thank you for your long and hard work. You know, we hope that you maintain connection with the people who have worked to support you in getting elected. And best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers four two five. If you would please dial star six to unmute your call. Caller with the last three numbers four two five. If you would please dial star six to unmute your call or select the microphone unmute option on your device. Thank you.
Hello?
Hi. You may proceed.
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk. My name is Dina Nguyen, trustee of Garn Grove Unified School District and member-director of OCWD, Orange County Water District. I want to first thank the current mayor and members of the city council for your service to our community and particularly to the community of the Vietnamese Americans. You have been friends, you've been friends to us and very understanding and sincere and generous in your service in the needs that we have for the Vietnamese American community. And second, I would like to congratulate the incoming council members and mayor Vincent Sarmiento. Although everyone is new, going to be new and old, but all of you make up a very important government entity to the Vietnamese American community. Each of you bring in special knowledge and experience that is needed for our community. And we really appreciate you working with the Vietnamese American community, making our small businesses better, and also helping the indigenous as well as low-income families in the community. So whether you're going to be new or old, you will always have a special place in our hearts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers nine four eight. Please dial star six to unmute your call or select the microphone unmute option on your device. Thank you. You may proceed with your comment. Caller with the last three numbers nine four eight. Please dial star six to unmute your call.
Person en el teléfono con los tres últimos números, nueve cuatro ocho. Por favor, marque estrella seis para reactivar su llamada.
Caller with the last three numbers nine four eight. Please dial star six or select the microphone unmute option on your device. Caller with the last three numbers five eight six. Please dial star six to unmute your call.
Number five.
Hi, thank you so much. You may proceed with your comment.
Hi there. Good evening. This is Sergio Escobar, and I'm calling today to thank and thank our outgoing council for their service and contributions to the city of Santa Ana. There is no doubt that their time on the council has shaped our city and progressed to where we are today. So I thank Councilman Jose Solorio, Mayor Protem Juan Viegas, and outgoing Mayor Miguel Pulido. And I also want to congratulate the incoming council, Jesse Lopez, Juan Ryan Hernandez, and my councilwoman Ty Viet Phan. Your wins are historic and represent the diversity in our city. And to our incoming mayor, Mayor Vicente Sarmiento, I wish you the best and I hope that you will lead our city into the right, in the right direction. And with that, thank you all. Best wishes. And I hope to see nothing but the best.
Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers four one one. Please dial star six to unmute your call or select the microphone unmute option on your device. Caller with the last three numbers four one one. Please dial star six to unmute your call or select the microphone. Caller with the last three numbers four two three. Please dial star six.
Hello?
Hi, yes, you may proceed with your comment.
Hi, this is Carolyn Torres, school board member for Santa Ana Unified. I just want to congratulate my new mayor Vincent Sarmiento as well as our two new women to city council, Ty Phan and Jesse Lopez. I'm so happy that you all will be on city council. I look forward to working closer with you on the school board. Congratulations. I know it must be bittersweet to not be able to have an in-person kind of gathering of the crowds, but I guarantee you, a lot of us are watching from home, so congratulations.
Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers or with the Zoom ID Adela Adela. Zoom ID Adela, A-D-E-L-A. If you would please select the unmute option on your device or microphone to unmute your call.
Hello?
Hi, yes, you may proceed with your comment.
Okay, I would like to speak in Spanish. My name is Adela Montañez. And I would like to congratulate Mayor Vicente Sarmiento and the new members for the council. And I'm very excited and happy to work together. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Okay, thank you. Zoom ID Alan Wu. Please select the unmute microphone option on your device. Zoom ID Alan Wu, thank you. You may proceed with your comment.
I just want to welcome the new city council and to say goodbye to my two dear friends, Mayor Miguel and Councilman Juan Villegas. You guys were a great part of Santa Ana. As we move forward, I hope that you guys will stay active and work with us to move to new heights. We've got a lot of issues that are unrelated to city council work that is placed upon the residents of the city. As you know, we have a young population and an aging population, and we have a lot of people out of work. And we're facing a great pandemic threat. So those things are going to be a great challenge, and we need as many great thinkers out there to be helping the community as we also try to bring some of our older neighborhoods back to a striving, vibrant, and healthy community. And congratulations, Councilman Jonathan Hernandez.
Thank you. Caller with the Zoom ID Alfonso Alvarez. If you would please select the microphone unmute option on your device. And you may proceed with your comment. Zoom ID Alfonso Alvarez. If you would please select the microphone unmute option on your device.
Hello, everybody. This is Dr. Alfonso Alvarez. I'm a member of the Southern School Board of Education. I wanted to take, I wanted to take this time to congratulate everybody. I wanted to take this time to congratulate everybody, the new council members and the new mayor. The pre-comment or last comment that I just wanted to make is that it's really important for the school board and the city council to work together. There are so many common issues that we can work together on, and by working together, we will make this a better community. Congratulations to everybody and good luck.
Thank you. Zoom ID Tish Lam. If you would please dial star six to unmute your call or select the unmute microphone.
Yes, hi.
Hi, yes, you may proceed.
Okay, thank you. I just also want to thank all the outgoing Mayor Pulido, Juan Viegas, and Jose Solorio for all that you've done for our city. Jose, especially, I want to thank you for reaching out to me to talk about the seniors. You know how important the seniors are for me and that you actually engaged in, hopefully, what you started will continue with a strategic plan for seniors. And all the incoming Jonathan, Ty, and Jesse, congratulations. I think it's awesome that we have such a young, progressive new council. And I'm also going to be reaching out to you to not forget about the seniors. We really need to focus on making it better for them, especially during the pandemic. And Vince Sarmiento, congratulations. I'm really looking forward to having a new mayor in our city. And best wishes to everybody coming in and going out. Thank you.
Thank you. Zoom ID Roberto Herrera. If you would please select the microphone unmute option on your device. Thank you. You may proceed.
Hello, everyone. Roberto with Resilience Orange County. Very happy about, you know, a shift in council and moving towards a more progressive vision for the city of Santana. For the past four years, I've been engaged in local advocacy to make our city more inclusive, not only for the immigrant community, but also for youth. And, you know, as we move forward, there's a lot that can be done to continue youth investments in the city budget passing process to incorporate more youth voices, more youth engagement. I think that's really important as millennials that are kind of coming in. You know, I think having to engage a lot of youth is important. In regards to also the immigrant community, you know, I know that we have a new president. And for the past four years, you know, we've been terrorized by the Trump administration. And I think when we think about the levels of support that we need to support the immigrant community, the Universal Defense Fund is something that needs to continue to be funded, right? Deportations are still going to continue under this current, under this new administration. I would hope to some extent, you know, less, if not, an ending to all deportations. But that is kind of not the reality that we've seen in the past. So I want to just wish you all, you know, the best and the residents and all of us, you know, to move forward in a positive direction. So really happy about the work that we're going to accomplish together the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers four one one. If you would please dial star six to unmute your call. Thank you. You could proceed with your comment.
Hi, I want to congratulate the new city council members, Sarmiento, this is Roger Santana, and the new members of the city council. I think your victories reflect the thriving need for change in our community. That's why they voted for you guys. You guys, I think you guys are bringing hope during this pandemic, and we need to take care of our community and our vulnerable people as it's doing right now. I also want to comment that I'm looking forward to see homelessness and police oversight being tackled to keep our residents safe. And I think that Santa Ana needs to step up to the other cities that leave their homelessness here. So Orange County can erase homelessness together. Also, the violence that Also, the violence that police antagonize to start protests I want to mention is the one on Bristol McFadden on May 30th. I think that could have been done differently so our small businesses wouldn't get graffiti. And once again, congratulations to Sarmiento. I think that is one of the greatest victories for our cities. And I want to congratulate Jonathan. Thanks so much, and look forward to the changes that are going to be brought by you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers, 589. If you would please dial star six to unmute your call or select the unmute option.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening. This is Batana Bern. He's Executive Director of the Cambodian Family Community Center, a 40-years nonprofit serving Santana residents. First of all, I want to send my sincere appreciation and thanks to outgoing Mayor Polido, council members Jose and Juan for your many years of services to the Santana diverse community. Also, I want to congratulate to Mayor Vince Sarmiento, council members Ty Viet Pan, Jessie Lopez, and Jonathan Hernandez. We look forward to working with you and serving the diverse community in Santa Ana and making sure that the city is able to provide mental health services to our youth, older adults and adults. Especially, we would like to make sure that the diverse communities in Santa Ana have equal access to the services, including the Cambodian, Vietnamese, Chinese, Latino communities, and many other communities. So we're really proud of what we have done together as a city, and we look forward to our continued partnership. Thank you. And again, this is Batana, Executive Director of the Cambodian Family Community Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers, 081. If you would please dial star six to unmute your call. Thank you, you may proceed with your... Please lower your volume if you're listening to another device. Thank you. You may proceed.
Buenas tardes.
Oh, buenas tardes.
¿Puedes hacer mi comentario?
Sí, por favor.
Sí, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Araceli Robles, residente de la ciudad de Santana, y quiero mandar mi felicitación al... Mandar mi felicitación al señor Sarmiento por la nueva posición. Mi nombre es Araceli Robles. Mi nombre es Araceli Robles. Quería felicitar al señor Sarmiento por la nueva posición y a los nuevos miembros del concilio. Y también quería decirle al señor Polido que cuando vio el video, cuando se estaba despidiendo, me dio mucha lástima de que no representaba realmente la... lo que refleja nuestra ciudad de Santana. Hasta el final siguió favoreciendo a todas las personas que no representan a nuestra comunidad. Espero que todo esto cambie con los nuevos concejales y el nuevo alcalde. Y a los concejales que van saliendo. Gracias por todo lo que le hicieron por nuestra comunidad. Gracias.
Okay, gracias por tu llamada. Zoom ID Mariana. If you would please select... Oh, thank you. You may proceed with your comment.
Hello, buenas noches.
Buenas noches.
Sí, ¿qué tal? Perdón, voy a hablar en español. Hablo desde Bolivia. Estoy, ya son casi las 23 horas. Soy periodista del diario Corredor del Sur de Sucre, y quería bueno aprovechar, yo creo que a nombre de todos los bolivianos, la elección de Don Vincent Sarmiento. Que bueno, durante estos días y a través de las redes sociales, pues muchos bolivianos han recibido con mucho cariño y orgullo la noticia de su elección. Y no sé si es posible solicitarle también que pueda dirigirse a todos los bolivianos en español, porque sé que algunos también están siguiendo esta transmisión, pese a que ya, como les digo, son las 23 horas acá en Bolivia, para de alguna manera también expresarles ese sentimiento de que se siente ser un boliviano haya tantos años en Estados Unidos y lograr ser alcalde. Nada más eso y felicitaciones. Yo creo, a nombre de todos los bolivianos, me voy a tomar el atrevimiento para el señor Sarmiento. Gracias.
Gracias. Okay, our interpreter is here to translate.
I guess, and I am calling from Bolivia. It's 11:00 PM over here, but I'm very excited to congratulate the newly-elected mayor, Sarmiento. We are very proud of this election taking place in Santana. And I would like to ask Mr. Sarmiento if he can address the Bolivian people in Spanish, because there's a lot of people who are very proud. We're feeling very proud of the election that took place in Santa Ana, electing a new mayor. So I'd like to be daring in speaking for all Bolivians in congratulating your new mayor, Mayor Sarmiento. And the previous speaker. Good evening. My name is Araceli Robles, resident of Santana. I'd like to congratulate Mayor Sarmiento in his new position and also congratulate the new council members. And also, when I watched Mr. Polido's video saying goodbye, it's very sad to see that he did not represent what Santa Ana really means. And he just represented all the people who do not represent our community. So I hope this all changes with the new council and the new mayor. And to the outgoing council members, thank you for all the things that you did for our community.
Okay, thank you. Last caller with the last three numbers, 496. Please dial star six to unmute your call. Thank you, you may proceed with your comment.
Good evening. This is Valeria Mesqua, Vice President of Santa Ana Unified Board of Education. I would like to thank the outgoing council members for their service. Running for office and being in office can be challenging. So we all want to thank you for your service. And for Jose Solario, working with Santa Ana Unified so closely, I really appreciate it as a board member and as a community member. Outgoing Miguel Polido, thank you. Good luck in your endeavors. And now, I want to congratulate our new mayor, Vince Sarmiento. I'm looking forward to continuing working with you, what you've been doing for many, many years in the community, you along with my father, my family. Congratulations to Jonathan Hernandez, our new council member, to Ty Viet Phan and Jessie Lopez. So Ty and Jonathan, so proud of you, so happy for both of you. Looking forward to working with both of you on the school district and the new mayor and the entire council, David Penalosa and Phil and Alida. Because the things that we need to do in the city for our youth and for education, we can go back to the days where we would do it together. Vince was on the council when we would do, worked very well together with Michelle Martinez and David Benavides and Roman Reyna and Saltean Harro. So I'm looking forward to that teamwork again for our community, for our students, for a good life in Santa Ana. So I'm so proud of you, and I'm looking forward to watching the next four years of all the wonderful things that you're doing. And Vince, new mayor, after I believe 28 years. Congratulations, and thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
Thank you. Caller with Zoom ID Edalia Rios. If you would please dial either... Oh, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to congratulate every new member of this east council. And I know a lot of community members were working towards these campaigns, and we are looking forward for a new Santana. We have been fighting for many years, and we are very happy because we believe that a change is coming. And this time, the council members are going to listen to the community. They're going to listen to the residents, and they're going to advocate. They're going to make decisions for the extra low-income families that we have in Santana. So I just want to say thank you, and we are looking forward to those changes. And I just want to say it in Spanish that... Felicidades a todos los que ganaron. Sé que muchos miembros de la comunidad estuvieron trabajando en campañas para que estas personas ahora sean parte de este concilio. Y estamos muy emocionados porque sabemos que un nuevo Santana se acerca y empieza. Por muchos años ha habido luchas, y ahora creemos que el cambio empieza. Entonces quiero agradecer, y estamos una vez más recalco muy emocionados de los cambios que vienen para Santana. Muchísimas gracias y felicidades a todos.
Gracias. Caller with the last three numbers, 513. If you would please dial star six to unmute your call or select the microphone unmute option on your device. Thank you, you may proceed.
Hello, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed. Thank you.
Good evening. This is Nancy Mejía. I'm the Chief Program Officer with Latino Health Access. And I'm calling in to congratulate our new mayor, Vincent Sarmiento, and also our new council members. Me estoy llamando de parte de Latino Health Access para felicitar a nuestro nuevo alcalde, Vicente Sarmiento, y también a las y los nuevos concejales. We are looking forward to working with all of you during this very challenging and historic time. Estamos emocionados de poder trabajar con todos ustedes durante estos tiempos muy retantes. And we invite all of you to work with us in serving the most vulnerable communities in Santa Ana. Y los invitamos a todos a que trabajen con nosotros en poder dar servicio a las comunidades más necesitadas en Santana. And also in creating policies that are going to be improving the equity in our city. Y también de poder pasar políticas que van a promover la equidad en nuestra comunidad. Así que manos a la obra. All hands are on deck. We're ready to work with you all and also to continue to challenge you. Y también estamos siguiendo listos para abogar para nuestra comunidad cuando necesitemos. Muchas gracias. Thank you, and congratulations once again. Felicidades.
Okay, caller with the last three numbers, 143. Please dial star six to unmute your call or select the microphone. You may proceed. Thank you.
Hello, buenas noches. ¿Me escuchan?
Sí, buenas noches.
Nada más quiero... Mi nombre es Verónica Chávez, y solamente quiero felicitar a Vicente Sarmiento, Jessie Lopez, Jonathan Hernández, y Ty Phan por este reconocimiento tan grandioso que se viene para Santana. En nombre de mi organización, Alabroy Seño, Martin López, desde el fondo de nuestro corazón, felicidades. Y no dudamos en lo más absoluto que van a hacer un gran trabajo, y estamos atrás para apoyarlos en lo que necesitan. Muchas felicidades.
My name is Verónica Chávez, and I'd like to congratulate Mayor Sarmiento, Jessie Lopez, and Ty Phan. And congratulations. On behalf of the community, we'd like to offer our hand. If there's anything that you need, you can count on us. Thank you very much.
Caller with the last three numbers, 251. If you would please dial star six or select the unmute option on your device. You may proceed. Persona en el teléfono con los tres últimos números, 251. Caller with the last three numbers, 361. Please dial star six.
Hola.
Hola. Puede continuar con su comentario.
Hello?
Hello, yes. Yes, you may proceed with your comment.
Hi, this is John Hannah. I'm speaking tonight not only as representative for the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters, but also as a trustee for the Alonso Santiago Community College District. And I want to, as I mentioned at the last meeting, I want to thank Miguel Polido and Jose Solario, Mr. Villegas, for their service to the city. But I want to congratulate our new mayor, Sarmiento. I've known Mr. Sarmiento for many years. He's a dedicated public servant, and I think he has the best interest of this community at heart and will be an excellent leader for our city. I also want to commend and congratulate the new council members, Jessie Lopez, Jonathan Hernandez, and Ty Viet Phan. Ty, you showed your quality on the planning commission, and I know you'll do a good job on this council. And I know that both Jessie and Jonathan are young, energetic, and will provide, I think, good leadership for their communities that they represent, as well as the entire city. I can say from the college district, we look forward to having a stronger relationship with this council. I think Valeria Mesqua, I want to join with some of her comments about how we have a number of people who have been involved over the years, as well as we have new people now. And I think if we can develop that good, close relationship with San Antonio Unified, Santa Ana College, and the city of Santa Ana, we will be able to provide wonderful opportunities for our young people, as well as the entire community. So congratulations, everybody, and best of luck to you.
Persona en el teléfono con los tres últimos números, 251. Por favor, marque estrella seis para reactivar su llamada.
Hola.
Hola. Usted puede continuar con su comentario.
Sí, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Laura Pantoja. Soy residente y una promotora de Latino Health Access. Y la razón de mi llamada es felicitar al nuevo concilio. Y creo que COVID nos ha traído muchas voces, pero también nos da la oportunidad con este nuevo concilio de seguir apoyando a la comunidad. En los últimos meses nos hemos sentido muy defraudadas porque se han apoyado leyes que van en contra de la comunidad y de la vivienda. Y tenemos un rayo de esperanza que esto puede cambiar. Gracias y felicidades, y bienvenidos.
Thank you. Translator will interpret.
Good evening. I'm Laura Pantoja. And I'm from Latino Health Access. And I'd like to congratulate the new council members. I think that COVID has given us a lot of lessons in the past, but also brings us lots of opportunities to continue serving our community. In the past months, we have been very let down by the laws that have passed against housing, but we're hoping now that things will change. Thank you.
Zoom ID Almita Mora. If you would please dial star six or select the unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, you can hear you. You may proceed with your comment.
Oh, hi. My name is Alma Mora, and the...
Oh, hi. My name is Alma Mora and everybody knows me as Almita Mora. And I'm just here to congratulate Mr. Sarmiento and the new council members. And I'm very happy to see that, hopefully, you know, he will support all the small businesses and all the diversity and all the cultural events and everything that Santana means to our people. And I just want to say that I see a bright future for our city. And just want to congratulate everyone and then thank you everyone for their service. And I wish you the best on your new endeavors. And that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers, 147. If you would please dial *6 to unmute your call or select the microphone unmute feature on your device. Caller with the last three numbers, 147. If you would please dial *6 to unmute your device. Persona en el teléfono con los tres últimos números, 147. Por favor, marque estrella seis para reactivar su llamada. Caller with the last three numbers, 147. Please dial *6 or your unmute microphone option on your device to unmute your call. Persona en el teléfono con los tres últimos números, 147. Por favor, marque estrella seis para reactivar su llamada. Caller with the last three numbers, 232. If you would please dial *6. Thank you.
Good evening. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we could hear you. You may proceed with your comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. First of all, my name is Rafael Rosco. I want to congratulate Mayor Sarmiento and all the new blood, Ms. López. It's great to see some additional diversity and great new and old blood. May you lead with passion and wisdom. I would ask that you, I also work with Latino Health Access. I'm the IT director there and I would just ask you to complete, complete your plan and vision for the youth in our city and provide more opportunities. Coaching baseball for 10 years has been a pleasure and wonderful to see how that changes lives. I would really ask if you could please try and facilitate for homeowners and residents the planning and permitting challenges that we face, as much as they're facilitated for the large developers that are outside interest. It's very difficult for citizens of the city to do anything in a timely manner. So again, thank you very much and you can count on our support over Latino Health Access. I appreciate you. God bless.
Thank you. Caller ID, Anita Mendez. If you would please select the microphone or unmute option on your device. Zoom ID, Anita Mendez. If you would please select the unmute microphone option on your device. Thank you. You may proceed with your comment.
I just wanted to congratulate Vicente Sarmiento and let him know we are so proud of him and wishing you all the very best and may God bless you and Godspeed. Thank you.
Caller with the last three numbers, 335. If you would please dial *6 to unmute your call or select the microphone unmute option on your device. Thank you, you may proceed. Yes, you may proceed.
Okay, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Pariah Ferro. Soy residente de Santana ya por más de 15 años. Mi llamada es para felicitar al señor Sarmiento, a las personas que están tomando también su posición y recordándoles que cuando se ha necesitado hablar acerca de la comunidad y buscar soluciones, señor Sarmiento siempre ha estado abierto. Esperamos que las puertas sigan estando abiertas con usted. Sigamos buscando la equidad para esta comunidad de Santana y felicitar a toda la comunidad de Santana porque a través del voto popular y a través del movimiento comunitario logramos derrotar la dictadura de una persona que estuvo por más de 20 años, lo cual es incluso para todos, para todos los residentes en Santana. Así que a trabajar juntos, a seguirnos cuidando unos a otros y seguir buscando el acceso a todos los recursos. Y no olviden que tenemos a nuestros jóvenes en nuestras comunidades encerrados en las casas y muchas opciones. Espero que piensen en todo lo que ha traído esta pandemia y que hay mucha gente que en este momento está en su casa esperando el día de mañana cuando las van a desalojar. Así que necesitamos protecciones, señor Sarmiento. Trabajemos juntos para el beneficio del resto de la comunidad y sobre todo de todas las personas que tienen menos acceso a recursos. Gracias.
Hello, residente of Santana and I'd like to congratulate Mayor Sarmiento and the new elected members. I'd like to remind you that when the community has needs and we got together, Mr. Sarmiento was open to working with us and we hope that this continues as well and that we can work together for the benefit of Santana. And this is for the benefit of the Santana community. The Santana community got together to engage in a movement to end the dictatorship that took place for over 20 years that was not fair for Santana residents. And we'd like to continue working together and to have access for a lot of the resources. I'd like to remind you that the youth have been inside in their homes for a long time and due to this pandemic and a lot of people are just expecting or awaiting evictions. So let's, Mr. Sarmiento, let's work together for the benefit of our community.
Zoom, last three numbers, 439. If you would please dial *6 to unmute your call. Caller with the last three numbers, 439. Thank you. You may proceed. Caller with the last three numbers, 439. You've been unmuted. You may proceed with your comment. Persona en el teléfono con los tres últimos números, 439. Puede continuar con su comentario, comentario. Caller with the last three numbers, 439. You've been unmuted. It sounds like we have feedback on your device. If you could please lower a YouTube or any other, wherever you're listening to the meeting, if you're on the call. Caller with the last three numbers, 439. You may proceed with your comment. You've been unmuted.
149.
Okay, si. Usted puede continuar con su comentario.
149.
No era lo, yo más que le dije, si el número, los tres últimos números de su teléfono es 439, usted puede continuar con su comentario.
Cuatro. Ah, 40. Cuatro, okay, perdón, soy yo. ¿Puedo hablar ahora?
Sí, por favor, puede hablar ahora.
Muy bien. Mi nombre es Cora Jackson y en primer lugar quiero felicitar a mi amigo, a mi compatriota, a Vicente Sarmiento. Me siento muy contenta y muy orgullosa que él está ahora de alcalde. A felicitar a todos los que han ganado en la nueva elección del city council. Y también, at the same time, I wanted to thank Miguel Pulido. I know, I met Miguel and I did, we did all his fundraising when he became the first mayor. I am very proud. You did great for the city. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you very much. I know that you will keep doing the best for the city. And Vicente Barrabo, we are very proud of you. I know that you will do great for the city too. The city of Santana, they are very lucky to get a person like Vicente to be one of their new mayor. Congratulations.
Gracias. Our interpreter will translate now.
Vicente Sarmiento, thank you. Congratulations on being elected mayor and also to the other people who were elected to the city council. And the rest was continued in English.
Thank you. Zoom ID, Cynthia Hernandez. If you would please select the microphone or unmute option on your device. Zoom ID, Cynthia Hernandez. If you would please select the unmute. Thank you. You may proceed with your comment.
Hi, congratulations to every new council member and thank you to Miguel Pulido for your service. That's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Zoom caller, Daniel Grissette. If you would please select the unmute button on your device. Thank you. Thank you. You may proceed.
Just a word to congratulate the new elected council members and wish the departing council members and mayor well as they move on to new efforts. But encouraged that the new council is going to be coming along with a vision for the city that I think will be very positive. Congratulations to all.
Thank you. Zoom ID, Eric. If you would please select your unmute microphone feature on your device. Zoom ID, Eric Aldarete. If you would please select the microphone unmute option on your device. Zoom ID, Eric Aldarete. If you would please select the unmute microphone feature on your device and proceed with your comment. Zoom ID, Erica Gonzalez. If you would please select the unmute feature on your device. Persona en el teléfono, Erica Gonzalez. Zoom ID, Erica Gonzalez. Please select the unmute microphone feature on your device. Zoom ID, Jessica Flores. If you would please select the microphone feature on your Zoom device. Zoom ID, Jessica Flores. If you can please select the microphone unmute feature on your device.
Hello, hi.
Hi, you may, yes, you may proceed with your comment. Thank you.
I just want to say congratulations and I'm looking forward for the new changes here in Santana. Thank you.
Thank you. Zoom ID, John Hannah. If you would please select the unmute microphone option on your device.
Yeah, I already spoke. Sorry.
That's okay. You're in here more than once, I see. Zoom ID, Kay Rubio. If you would please select the unmute microphone on your device. Zoom ID, Carla Juarez. If you would please select the unmute feature on your device.
Yes, hi. Carla Juarez, longtime resident of Santana. My general comment is to bring light on the fact that Mr. Pulido did not really represent the people in Santana. It is very sad that he did have humble beginnings as his family did own a mopier shop that was being also kicked out of the area because it was being gentrified. And this is how he also started being involved in politics. And it's very sad that throughout his, his career in politics, he did not serve the city residents of Santana the same way that we served him. And I am very glad that he is going to be gone from the city council. In my 35 years, it's 32 years, I never did I felt that he was open to hearing us, to helping us, to supporting us, to being there for the residents. And he definitely just helped his own interest. So I am very happy to see a new chapter in the city of Santana and thank you for my time.
Thank you. Caller ID, Adolfo Sierra. If you would please select the unmute feature on your device. You may proceed. Thank you.
Hello, hi. I just want to congratulate the outgoing council members for their work through all these years. And of course, and, or congratulations to the new council members, especially Mayor Sarmiento. I'm calling in behalf of the Madison Park Neighborhood Association. I'm an interim president. And I would like to also ask you to join us next year with a lot of work that we are doing within the city, especially with the general plan updates. I think it's a very important document, still a work in progress. And collaborating with different organizations, the University of California, Irvine, with the Environmental Law Clinic and other organizations and other schools from UCI. It's been, and proven to be a very good collaboration with the city. And again, looking forward to continue the work and take care and Y, nuevamente, espero continuar el trabajo y cuidar y esperar que el 2021 sea un año mejor y también hacer que la ciudad de Santa Ana sea una ciudad mejor. Gracias.
Gracias. ID Zoom Kyler Kayla Asato. Si quisieras seleccionar el desmúsculo en tu dispositivo.
Sí, mi nombre es Kyler Kayla. Soy parte del OC Environmental Justice Steering Committee. Me gustaría decir las felicidades a todos los nuevos miembros. Y también esperamos trabajar en el plan general con ustedes y espero que esto funcione bien.
Gracias. Llamador ID Zoom Margot Diaz. Si quisieras seleccionar el desmúsculo en tu dispositivo. ID Zoom Margot Diaz. O Margot Diaz. Hola, ustedes pueden proceder con su comentario. ID Zoom Margot Diaz o Margot Diaz. Por favor, selecciona el micrófono o la opción de desmúsculo en tu dispositivo. Llamador con tres números últimos: 451. Por favor, dí el star 6 para desmúsculo tu llamada. O selecciona el micrófono o la opción de desmúsculo en tu dispositivo.
¿Me escuchas?
Sí, podemos escucharte. Gracias. Puedes proceder con tu comentario.
Gracias. Lo diré en español y luego en inglés. Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Isuri. Soy residente del área 3 y he vivido en Santa Ana por mucho tiempo. Hoy llamo para darles felicitaciones a nuestros nuevos concejales, especialmente al alcalde Sarmiento y a la concejal Jessy López. Tengo esperanza que esta transición va a priorizar a los residentes más vulnerables de Santa Ana y no a los intereses especiales. Espero ver pólizas fuertes que van a apoyar y expandir la vivienda de bajo costo, las protecciones para las personas que están rentando y protección de los policías. Este consiglo nuevo tiene que hacer todo lo posible para no solo estar en esa posición, pero para proteger a sus residentes. Les dejo con el decodatorio que más de la mitad de los residentes de Santa Ana son inquilinos. Inquilinos que están pagando mucho de renta, inquilinos que están haciendo todo lo que pueden para mantenerse en sus hogares y no perderlos y tener que salir a las calles ahorita que estamos en esta pandemia. Les deseo todo lo mejor y les pido que mantengan los valores con los que lanzaron sus campañas. Entonces, buenas noches. Soy Isuri. Soy residente de la ciudad de San Antonio y residente de la ciudad de Santa Ana. Esta noche me llamo para felicitar a nuestro nuevo alcalde, al alcalde Sarmiento y a la concejala Jessy López. Espero que esta transición priorice a los residentes más vulnerables de Santa Ana y sus necesidades sobre sus intereses especiales. Espero ver políticas fuertes que apoyarán y expandirán la supervisión policial, la vivienda accesible y la protección de los alquileres. Este cónsul debe hacer lo que sea para no solo servir, sino proteger a sus residentes. Te dejo con el recordatorio de que la mitad de tus residentes son alquileres que tienen un cargo severo de renta y que están luchando para mantenerse alojados y no ir a la desaparición durante esta pandemia. Te deseo todo lo mejor y os pido que seguiréis con los valores progresivos de los que hablábais. Gracias.
Gracias. Okay. ID Zoom Kristen González. Si quisieras seleccionar el desmúsculo o el micrófono en tu dispositivo. Personita en el teléfono con el ID. Christine González. Por favor, marque la estrella 6 para reactivar su llamada. Personita en el teléfono con el nombre Cristen González.
Gracias. Sí.
Sí, usted puede hablar.
Okay, sí. Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Alejandra Luciano y estoy hablando para felicitar a mi Sarmiento. Muchas felicidades por su logro y gracias a Dios lo logró y felicidades a los demás también concejales. Y que esperemos que sea un buen... bueno, en estas épocas que estamos, en esta epidemia. Muchas gracias.
Gracias. Nuestro intérprete traducirá.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Alejandra Luciano y me gustaría felicitar al alcalde Sarmiento por su reciente elección y su éxito. Y también me gustaría felicitar a todos los miembros del cónsul que fueron electos y espero que esto sea algo bueno durante este tiempo de pandemia.
Llamador con tres números últimos 866. Si quisieras dí el star 6 para desmúsculo tu llamada o selecciona el micrófono para desmúsculo tu dispositivo. Gracias. Puedes proceder.
Llamador con tres números últimos 866.
Hola, oh, por favor, por favor, baja el volumen en el dispositivo que estás escuchando la reunión. Gracias.
Hola, queremos felicitar a Jessy por toda su trabajo y también al alcalde Sarmiento. Los trabajadores progresistas han realmente logrado en esta elección y estamos emocionados por lo que va a venir para la ciudad de Santa Ana. Estamos emocionados. Gracias, Jessy.
Gracias. Llamador con ID Zoom Emily Peraza. Si quisieras dí el... O selecciona el desmúsculo en tu dispositivo. ID Zoom Lucy. Si quisieras seleccionar el micrófono o la opción de desmúsculo en tu dispositivo. ID Zoom para Emily Peraza, K Rubio y Lucy. Parece que no has actualizado tu aplicación de Zoom, así que si puedes, por favor, llamar como instruido en nuestro sitio web de la ciudad en santaanna.org/city-meetings. ID Zoom Nelly Legazt. Si quisieras seleccionar el desmúsculo en tu dispositivo.
Buenas noches a todos. Como mencioné, mi nombre es Nelly Legazt. Mi nombre completo es Nellie Ann. Mi corazón es Legazt. Y esta noche estoy hablando para felicitar a mi nuevo alcalde, Vicente Sarmiento, así como el cónsul de la ciudad de San Antonio, la concejala Jessy López, también a Ty Pham y especialmente a Jonathan Ryan Hernandez. Estoy tan orgullosa de ustedes, Jonathan, y estoy emocionada. Esta noche hablo a cargo de la local 2076 que representa a los trabajadores de la eligibilidad y especialistas en la eligibilidad de los trabajadores de la red social de la región de Orange. También hablo como mujer nativa de los Naciones Unidas. Soy de sangre de Oglala y Chiracawa. Y somos la población insegua de Santa Ana, pero te prometo que serás visto. A todos ustedes, estoy muy esperando trabajar con ustedes y ver las cosas que van a pasar. Estoy extremadamente emocionada. Esta es la ciudad en la que crecí mi madre y estoy orgullosa de ser residente y empleada en esta condición y en la ciudad. Vivir aquí, no viviría en ningún otro lugar. No podrías pagarme suficiente dinero. Y mirando esta nueva ciudad de cónsul, especialmente los jóvenes que vienen, oh, Dios mío, es tan emocionante. Sé que todos ustedes hacen cosas increíbles y sé que las personas que te han apoyado te mantendrán a todos responsables. Porque así es como trabajamos juntos para iniciar el cambio que va a hacer una gran diferencia para tus residentes y para el futuro que todos representamos. Siempre es bueno mirar al pasado por conocimiento histórico y experiencia y mirar al futuro con nuestros jóvenes porque es su futuro que vamos a hacer cambio por. Todos esos niños pequeños están mirando hacia todos ustedes y sabiendo que pueden hacerlo ahora. Así que como mujer de las Naciones Unidas, quiero decir "hoca", lo que significa que es un buen día para morir de una buena manera y luchamos con ustedes. Gracias.
Gracias. Llamador con tres números últimos 971. Si quisieras dí el star 6 en tu dispositivo. O selecciona el desmúsculo en tu dispositivo.
Hola, mi nombre es Evelyn Peraza y solo quería felicitar al Consejo de la Ciudad del Cónsul. Estoy muy emocionada y esperando los cambios que van a pasar en la ciudad, especialmente esperando los cambios y inversiones que van a ocurrir para ustedes. Si el cónsul de la ciudad sigue en lo que sus campañas se han centrado. Y les deseo todo el suerte y quería dar un saludo a todos ustedes que participaron y se involuntaron durante esta temporada de campaña y ustedes realmente lo ayudaron. Gracias.
Gracias. Llamador con tres números últimos 474. Si quisieras dí el star 6 para desmúsculo tu llamada. O la opción de micrófono en tu dispositivo para desmúsculo tu llamada. Y puedes proceder con tu comentario.
Hola, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Walter Munedón. Soy el presidente del Consejo de la Ciudad de Garden Grove, Board of Education. Y, por supuesto, quería felicitar a las personas que vienen al cónsul, a los miembros del cónsul, así como al nuevo alcalde de Santa Ana. Gracias a ustedes. Espero tener una nueva cooperación con el Consejo de Garden Grove, la Ciudad de Garden Grove, para nuestros residentes mutuales que residen en la comunidad de West Santa Ana. Espero trabajar con ustedes. Gracias y tenga una buena noche.
Gracias. Llamador con tres números últimos. Oh, parece que el llamador se ha desplazado. Okay. ID Zoom Adriana Soto Perez. Si quisieras seleccionar el desmúsculo en tu dispositivo. ID Zoom Adriana Soto Perez. ID Zoom Isabel Muñez López. Si quisieras...
Hola.
Hola. Usted puede hablar.
Sí, solo quiero felicitar a todos los miembros del cónsul. El alcalde Sarmiento. Estoy orgullosa de ser parte de la comunidad y que tengamos un año que esperar. Gracias.
Gracias. ID Zoom Luis M. Si quisieras seleccionar el desmúsculo en tu dispositivo.
¿Alguien me escucha?
Sí, podemos escucharte. Puedes proceder.
Lo siento, es mi primera vez en Zoom. Felicidades, Ty. Es genial ver a un miembro de clase local en el cónsul. Sé que vas a hacer un gran trabajo y felicidades a todos los nuevos personas en el cónsul. Espero ver qué vas a hacer para nuestra ciudad.
Gracias. ID Zoom Priscilla Medina. Si quisieras seleccionar el desmúsculo en tu dispositivo. Puedes proceder con tu comentario. ID Priscilla Medina, podemos escucharte. ID Priscilla Medina. ¿Has desmúcido tu llamada?
Me escucho.
Oh, sí, puedes hablar.
Oh, gracias. Bueno, estoy contenta por esta oportunidad de poder dirigirme a los nuevos miembros del cónsul. Nos sentimos realmente realizados por esta victoria. Hemos trabajado como comunidad para poder ayudarnos en este tiempo de pandemia y estamos esperanzadas en que seamos capaces de cumplir todos nuestros proyectos en bien de la comunidad. Y felicitaciones a Sarmiento porque nos ha dado la apertura de poder haber trabajado con él y que nos ha dado la oportunidad de seguir trabajando en comunidad. Gracias.
Gracias. Nuestro intérprete traducirá. Gracias.
Estoy muy feliz por la continuidad de este, la continuidad del cónsul y estoy muy feliz por las victorias. Y trabajamos duro juntos con la comunidad y esperamos continuar trabajando en proyectos a cargo de la comunidad. Hay mucho trabajo que hacer con la comunidad, a cargo de la comunidad, trabajando juntos.
Gracias. ID Zoom Rivera Family. Si quisieras seleccionar el desmúsculo en tu dispositivo y proceder con tu comentario. ID Zoom Rivera Family. Si quisieras seleccionar el desmúsculo en tu dispositivo. Llamada con el nombre Rivera Family. Para reactivar su llamada, por favor, activen el sonido en el aparato en el cual está usando Zoom. ID Zoom Rivera Family. Si quisieras seleccionar el desmúsculo en tu dispositivo. Para desmúsculo tu llamada. ID Zoom Ron Torres. Si quisieras seleccionar el desmúsculo en tu dispositivo y proceder con tu comentario. Has desmúcido. Puedes proceder con tu comentario. Por favor, baja el volumen en el dispositivo que estás escuchando la reunión.
ID Zoom Ron Torres. Por favor, selecciona el desmúsculo en tu dispositivo.
Por favor, baja el volumen en el aparato que... en el aparato que estás viendo YouTube.
Please lower the volume on the device you're listening to the meeting.
Okay. Sarai Arpero. If you would please select the microphone feature on your device to unmute your call. Zoom ID Sarai Arpero.
Perdón, ya hice mi comentario, gracias.
Okay, gracias. Zoom ID Maria Rojas. If you would please select the unmute feature on your device. And proceed with your comment. Okay, the call dropped. Eli- Zoom ID Elizabeth. If you would please select the microphone icon on your device to unmute your call. Okay, you may proceed.
Be one.
Oh, sí, buenas tardes, puede, puede.
Buenas, buenas tardes. Uh, mi nombre es Elizabeth Martinez y me da mucho gusto poder saludar y felicitar a todos los que quedaron en, como el alcalde y Jesse. A nuevo, este, a nuevo concejal también. Este, me da mucho gusto poder participar esta noche. Darle la bienvenida. Y pues, felicitarlos a todos, verdad? Y es, y tengo la esperanza que a la mejor tal vez si podemos trabajar en conjunto como eh, organizaciones no lucrativas, líderes comunitarios, personas que nos representan en la ciudad, podemos hacer un Santana mejor para el bienestar de nuestros jóvenes y de todos nuestros adultos y niños. Muchísimas gracias y que tengan buena noche.
Okay, good night, yes, um, our interpreter will go ahead and translate now.
Good evening, my name is Elizabeth Martinez and I'm very happy to be here and congratulate all the, uh, the people who won, the winners of the election. Of course, our mayor and Jesse and the other council members as well. I'm happy to be here in this occasion to welcome you. And, uh, I'd like to congratulate all of you who won. And I hope that we can work together to, uh, benefit our community, to better, uh, to work together with, uh, community leaders and others to better Santa Ana for, to benefit our youth and the elderly and everybody else. Thank you and good night.
Mayor, that was the last caller.
Okay. Um, let me, uh, go back to the agenda, give me a moment.
All right, um, item fifty-five A, Mayor.
Hold on. All right, so we're done with the speakers. So I know, I, I now want to make sure we go, uh, adopt a resolution. Uh, basically, uh, declaring the November third, twenty twenty general municipal election results. So I would like to, uh, entertain a motion on adopting a resolution, please.
Mayor, I'll go ahead and move it.
I'll second.
Okay, we have motion by Ms. Sarah, who was the second?
I'll second, Councilmember Peñalosa.
Okay. Before we vote, are there any additional, um, comments that, uh, any folks want to make? If not, my plan would be to vote on this. Then we'll present the tiles. And we would have the, you know, three folks going out, make a little speech, then we would, you know, have the, uh, adopt the resolution. Uh, in essence, bringing in the new folks and they would do the oath of office, we'd have a, a video, et cetera, et cetera. So does anybody want to do anything different from that? If not, let me go ahead and, uh, ask the clerk to do a roll call vote on adopting the, uh, the election results, please. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Becerra?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Madam Clerk, is she not there?
She is.
Oh, I'm here, I, here I am, uh, yes, that's a definite yes for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Peñalosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Sarmiento?
Yes.
Councilmember Solario?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Viegas?
Yes.
Mayor Polito?
Yes. And now, um, I would like for you to present, uh, the city tiles. And offer the three outgoing, uh, council members the opportunity to say a word or two if they so like. Um, do you want to go ahead and handle the presentation?
I'm certainly, Mayor, this is Christine Ridge, City Manager. And so we, we don't have a video for this, but we do, we do have some photos. And, um, thank you, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem and Councilmember Solario. I would like to recognize your service to the residents of our great city. I'm gonna start with Councilmember Solario. Since the start of your term in twenty sixteen, you have advocated for the needs of our community to make this city better. Over those four years, your substantial experience in both local and state government, public affairs and communications has served our city well. I have seen you work diligently to improve the quality of life in San Ana by championing public safety, advocating for funding to protect families and businesses, and focusing on real-time improvements to our neighborhoods.
Madam, um, City Manager, there's something wrong with the signal. On TV, it's not coming through and on my phone, it's not coming through.
Is that the audio or the video?
There is no video, um, and the audio is intermittent.
Thank you, sir, let us see if we can address that.
We'll see if our AV guys are able to, um, fix that. Should be appearing now.
Yeah, go ahead and take a minute.
Okay, I think it should be appearing now, is that correct, or?
Mayor, can you hear me now?
We can hear you now, the screen is still black, occasionally it flashes on Councilmember Solario. But usually it's black. Maybe just move on, forget the video, let's just keep, keep it going here.
Okay, so it's not a video that's displayed, it is a picture of Councilmember Solario and then a picture of the city tile. That will be presented to him. So I'm, I'm not sure where I was cut out, but I was basically thanking Councilmember Solario for his four years in improving our community. And it certainly has been a pleasure working for you and I warmly express my gratitude to you for your service to the community. And I wish you all the best in the future. Mayor Protem Juan Viegas, it's my honor to recognize you for your four ser- years of service on the city council. Including the last two where you served as the Mayor Protem. And may I say you perform those responsibilities seamlessly. Thank you for your active role in legislative and policy matters to be a champion of the city and to score us additional funding for community policing. It was a pleasure working with you at achieving one of your long-term goals. That of bringing a family justice center to our city and creating a safe haven for victims of domestic violence. Also, with your constant attention to improve mobility and traffic safety, you are responsible for many speed bumps and improved alleyways through our city. Thank you, Mayor Protem Viegas, for your dedication and commitment to serving the San Ana community. I will miss your no-nonsense, straight-talking approach to everything. And it certainly has been a pleasure serving as your city manager these last eighteen months. And lastly, Mayor Polito. I knew of you long before I actually met you, as you were shaking up Orange County with your bold moves and economic revitalization of Santa Ana since nineteen eighty-six. An incredible legend serving our community for thirty-four years. You have been a major force not only in our city, but also regionally and nationally. You always know the person to call to get stuff done. Over the years, you've improved the quality of life in San Ana by reducing crime to historic lows, promoting business and economic development, champion arts and culture, supporting youth education and increasing community engagement and much more. Even after your departure, we will still see the impacts of your leadership with the forthcoming completion of Santa Ana OC Streetcar, which will contribute further to the city's revitalization. Your impact to Santa Ana is clear and profound. On a personal level, I want to express my deep appreciation and enormous gratitude for convincing me to come to Santa Ana as your city manager. It has been an incredible opportunity and an honor serving you. I'm not sure what you're gonna be doing in the next chapter of your life. I only know you'll be doing it at full speed. I wish you a full future of playing tennis, yoga, running marathons and spending time with your lovely family. For each of you, the city has a special gift, which includes a city tile, your formal picture, a proclamation recognizing your service and dedication to the city. And so with that, I want to once again thank you all for contributing so much.
Thank you, Madam City Manager, and let me, you know, first, uh, thank all the citizens of, uh, San Ana for their support, uh, all these years, uh, helping us make, uh, the community you all love so much, uh, into just a, a fantastic, beautiful, thriving city. Um, I know, uh, you know, we're going out here, this is more of the time to hear from the new folks. But let me just say that the pandemic, uh, has robbed us all of many things. Many of our families of loved ones and, and the seventeen thousand, uh, folks here in town that have been infected. Uh, you know, hopefully it'll be for recovery, but, uh, the vaccine cannot come soon enough. And I've, uh, you know, pledged to the, to the new city council, in particular to Mayor Sarmiento, and I like the way that sounds, Mayor Sarmiento. Um, uh, continued cooperation on the pandemic. Uh, fortunately or unfortunately, I've had to go through the school of hard knocks. Um, and that not only is Matt, you know, lobbying for, uh, dollars here, uh, you know, to come to San Ana. But also very importantly, trying to work with the city council and the committee to figure out how to, how to deploy them effectively through staff. And I want to thank you in particular, Madam City Manager, because you did not sign up for this. None of us did. But you've done absolutely wonderfully, um, along with, uh, with Daisy Perez. Uh, I joke around with her on occasion, cause sometimes, you know, you have to, uh, not take things overly serious, but, but, uh, you know, she's performed very aggressively on this and I just want to take, uh, a moment to mention that and, and to thank you, uh, and her, because I believe you've been the leaders on, on the response to the pandemic. Um, I look forward to continuing to, you know, work with all of you. Uh, and in particular, you know, to Ty Pham, Jesse Lopez, Jonathan Hernandez. Um, I know you will do, uh, well, very well. And, uh, and to Vicente Sarmiento. Uh, you know, Vince, uh, you know, this is the passing of the baton. And like all those Olympic relay races, you know, the team that's winning, if they drop it, they, they lose a lot of momentum. Um, I know you are very capable, I know you will do well. Um, and I want to make sure that this transition is completely seamless. Uh, and that we all give you, uh, and the new administration and the city staff and everybody one hundred percent support. So that we can make it through this very tough winter. This is gonna be the toughest winter in the history of the city. But there is light at the end of the tunnel. Uh, you know, the vaccine will come, the pandemic will end. And before we went into this, uh, dark period, you know, so many things were going so well in the city. I know that will be the case in the not-too-distant future. Uh, and with that, I would like to offer the other two, uh, council members that are leaving the council. Mayor Protem to chance say a few words, uh, and also, uh, you know, Councilmember Jose Solario. If you would so like to say a few words, now would be the appropriate time.
Councilmember Solario can go. Jose?
Oh, thank you, uh, Mayor Protem. Uh, first and foremost, wanted to thank all the residents of San Ana for the opportunity to serve, it's been an incredible opportunity. I've had a blessed life and, you know, continue to have a blessed life and, uh, uh, you know, the opportunity to serve is a great one, my passion is to public service and I, you know, will continue to do that with my work at, at the water district and, um, and other things, including here in the community. Uh, wanted to also thank the staff that has worked, uh, the most closely with me these past four years, uh, beginning with, uh, my assistants, uh, Yeovman, Yeovman Vasquez initially, followed by NG, uh, Morris, they've been fabulous, uh, through and through. The professional staff, Christine Ridge, uh, top-notch city manager and very pleased of, uh, what we've been able to accomplish. Uh, very able, uh, attorney, Sonia Rigo Carvajal. Thank you so much for all your, uh, insights and legal works over the years. Our still fairly new, um, city clerk, Daisy Gomez, thank you for, uh, keeping the council as organized as we can. Uh, all the department heads, and there's too many to, to mention, but all department heads have been fabulous, have been doing good work. Uh, and then some of the real special staff in the city manager's office as well, uh, Julie Castro Cardenas, who was there early on when I started, uh, Daniel Soto, Daisy Perez, um, Paul Egan, all, all fantastic. Um, you know, we all sacrificed a lot with our families, I know my immediate family and extended family, uh, uh, you know, definitely sacrificed and I thank them and will always be grateful. Uh, I do feel that over the past four years, despite the circumstances, we did have a lot of accomplishments, uh, that as a team we accomplished, we reduced nine-one-one response times and improved, uh, staffing levels to keep our community safe. We implemented new body one cameras that have, uh, led to many fewer officer involved shootings. A youth fund that, uh, Mayor Protem Viegas and I took the lead on that leaves the new council with, uh, you know, six million plus in youth funds, so use it well and that'll continue to grow. Uh, in terms of affordable housing units, we, we have about fifteen hundred uh, in production that have already been done and no other city has done that, it's been incredible. We have a rental assistance program, the second to none in the county with almost about two million dollars, I believe. Uh, and then I was also the sweet vote on the going toward elections and it was very controversial and complicated at the time, but once I saw, uh, the, the numbers, you know, it was important to follow the California Board of Rights Act and I'm uh, proud that we're gonna have more focus now on neighborhood issues rather than sometimes where, where ideological issues. And then unfinished business though for the, you know, new mayor and, and the council, uh, you know, homelessness, I think we gotta continue to be more aggressive on that. The use of these youth fund dollars. Uh, you know, I know David Peñalosa and, and others will work on that dog park, you know, we should have a dog park. Uh, keeping our rental assistance program and, uh, stopping as many evictions as we can. Uh, and then COVID. Um, I, you know, finally just want to begin formally congratulate, uh, virtually, uh, Mayor Sarmiento, uh, and incoming council members Jonathan Hernandez, Vieta Phan, uh, and Jesse Lopez. And it's not a goodbye, you know, I'm still a constituent here, we'll continue to be a well-built community. But it's, uh, see you in twenty twenty-one, if not earlier, thank you so much.
So I will go, Mr. Mayor.
That was it, uh, Councilmember?
Yes.
Councilmember Protem, do you want to say anything?
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And it was, uh, uh, very much a honor to serve as your Mayor Protem for the last two years and alongside of you here at the council. I want to take a moment to thank all the callers who called in today. And, um, you know, all the residents, we appreciate, uh, the phone calls, the input. You know, four years ago, uh, the residents of San Ana gave me the great, uh, honor and opportunity to serve as their council member. And tonight, I want to say thank you to them for that opportunity to serve you. opportunity to serve you. I leave here with no regrets. I made decisions and voted the way I saw fit, and always for the greater good of the city. In four years, I've never missed a council meeting, and I held an average of four hundred meetings per year, and I have been loyal to my oath of office and to the residents of Santa Ana. I abided by the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. And I've had the opportunity to hear from many of you, the residents, from letters and emails, phone calls, city council meetings, and meetings in my office. I got to know you and appreciate your goodness and to hear how proud you are of your city, and to me, that is very priceless. In Santa Ana, we are guided by the standard of excellence, and all of the achievements that this city completes are because of the residents and the excellent fourteen hundred hard-working city employees that we have here, that are led by a great city manager and the department heads. I also want to take a moment to thank and acknowledge the council members who served with me prior to this council, and that is Michelle Martinez, former Mayor Pro Tem, who I call my mentor, Mr. Salte Nahero, and David Benavides, who I call friends now. It was great to serve on the council with you. And again, to all the department heads, our chief of police, our OC FA division chief, and to all the men and women in uniform, and to everyone who works here for the city, thank you so much. It was an honor to work with you. And to the residents, thank you again. Till we meet again, thank you and good night.
Thank you for that, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. I now want to have the clerk or whomever, I believe we have a video presentation for our new mayor, Vince Sarmiento, councilman award one, Ty Phan, councilman award three, Jesse Lopez, councilman award five, Jonathan Ryan Hernandez. Should we proceed, Madam Clerk? Are you just going to play the video? What are we going to do?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. At this time, we will watch a pre-recording of the administration of the oath of office and celebration.
And repeat after me. I
I
state your name
Vicente Sarmiento
do solemnly swear
do solemnly swear
that I will support and defend
that I will support and defend
the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of California
and the Constitution of the State of California
against all enemies
against all enemies
foreign and domestic
foreign and domestic
that I will bear true faith and allegiance
that I will bear true faith and allegiance
to the Constitution of the United States
to the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of California
and the Constitution of the State of California
that I take this obligation freely
that I take this obligation freely
without any mental reservation
without any mental reservation
or purpose of evasion
or purpose of evasion
that I will and will faithfully discharge
that I will and faithfully discharge
the duties upon which I am about to enter
the duties upon which I'm about to enter
congratulations.
Congratulations, Madam Sarmiento.
And repeat after me. I
I
please state your name
Ty Phan
do solemnly swear
do solemnly swear
that I will support and defend
that I will support and defend
the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of California
and the Constitution of the State of California
against all enemies
against all enemies
foreign and domestic
foreign and domestic
that I will bear true faith and allegiance
that I will bear true faith and allegiance
to the Constitution of the United States
to the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of California
and the Constitution of the State of California
that I take this obligation freely
that I take this obligation freely
without any mental reservation
without any mental reservation
or purpose of evasion
or purpose of evasion
that I will well and faithfully discharge
that I will well and faithfully discharge
the duties upon which I am about to enter
the duties upon which I am about to enter
congratulations, councilwoman.
Thank you.
So please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name
I Jesse Lopez
do solemnly swear
do solemnly swear
that I will support and defend
that I will support and defend
the Constitution of the United States the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California
and the Constitution of the State of California
against all enemies
against all enemies
foreign and domestic
foreign and domestic
that I will bear true faith and allegiance
that I will bear true faith and allegiance
to the Constitution of the United States
to the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of California
and the Constitution of the State of California
that I take this obligation freely
I take this obligation freely
without any mental reservation
without any mental reservation
or purpose of evasion
or purpose of evasion
that I will well and faithfully discharge
that I will well and faithfully discharge
the duties upon which I am about to enter
the duties upon which I am about to enter
congratulations.
Thank you.
Now repeat after me. I state your name
I Jonathan Hernandez
do solemnly swear
do solemnly swear
that I will support and defend
that I will support and defend
the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of California
and the Constitution of the State of California
against all enemies
against all enemies
foreign and domestic
foreign and domestic
that I will bear true faith and allegiance
that I will bear true faith and allegiance
to the Constitution of the United States
to the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of California
and the Constitution of the State of California
that I take the obligation freely
that I take the obligation freely
without any mental reservation
without any mental reservation
or purpose of evasion
or purpose of evasion
that I will well and faithfully discharge
that I will well and faithfully discharge
the duties upon which I'm about to enter
the duties upon which I'm about to enter
me as your next mayor. I'm incredibly humbled by your confidence, and I promise to work hard to honor the trust
congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
you've extended to me. As we all know, this election was historic for many reasons. First of all, it is the first time in twenty-six years that Santa Ana will have a new mayor. We also made history by electing the first and only Bolivian-born mayor of a large city in the United States. But most significant is that the three incoming council members and myself were all either born or raised here. We are literally the sons and daughters of Santa Ana, genuine homegrown products of this city. Unfortunately, we conduct this installation in the historic shadow of the COVID-19 pandemic. Although we all would have preferred to have these ceremonies in person with our family, friends, and neighbors, we must instead meet this moment and keep ourselves and those around us safe. That said, I'm extremely hopeful that we will be able to celebrate together soon. We can finally see the light at the end of this very long and difficult tunnel. But we must build a virtual bridge from now until vaccines and treatments are available to everyone in our community. Santa Ana, the future is bright. Together, we will see our community get healthy, we will see our kids go back to school, we will see our businesses reopen, and get our economy going strong again, and yes, we will put this pandemic in the rearview mirror. You know, this past election was also historic for its record-breaking turnout. There was an almost eighty percent voter turnout, and over ninety-five thousand votes were cast in Santa Ana. By Monday before the Tuesday election, over fifty percent of eligible voters in Santa Ana had cast their ballots, and a majority of those early votes came from young people ages eighteen to thirty-five. In this cycle, the voters spoke clearly and decisively that they wanted to reclaim their government. With this direction, we intend to usher in a new era of community-led priorities and write the next chapter in Santa Ana's history. While being responsible and balanced, our new course must be a departure from the ways of the past. The following is a quote from Franklin Delano Roosevelt. Quote, "The test of our progress is not whether we add more to the abundance of those who have much, it is whether we provide enough for those who have too little." These words have been a source of inspiration to me and have guided my journey when faced with difficult decisions. Santa Ana is one of the largest cities in the largest state in our union. We must conduct ourselves as such and be bold in our aspirations, but never again ignore the needs of those most vulnerable among us. We must ensure that dignified housing is available and accessible. We must invest and create an environment where our kids can thrive. We can keep our neighborhoods safe and make sure that Santa Ana is not the receptacle for all of the county's problems. We must humanely address the problem of the unhoused. We must defend the rights of all immigrants. We must hold all of our city employees accountable and protect the health and welfare of all of our residents. To our staff and city family, I thank you for all the work and professionalism you perform for our residents, and I thank you in advance for your ability to adapt to a new civic culture. My hope is to unleash your talents and skills to better meet the needs of our city. In turn, you have my commitment that your value to Santa Ana and this organization will not only be appreciated but respected. To our stakeholders, city partners, and network of nonprofit providers, we look forward to continuing to work together. We never forget that your success is our success. To our partners in the private sector, we know you will thrive under this new leadership. We will strive to create a more predictable and collaborative experience for you as we work together to improve our city. To my colleagues, past, present, and future, thank you to those who have served. There is no more noble a cause than serving the public. We appreciate the sacrifice you and your families have made to improve the lives and conditions of our residents. To my colleagues, present and future, I challenge you to join me to chart a new course for our city, one where we inspire our community by uplifting their lives and never letting others define who we are. We have a moment to create our new narrative where no one will ever be ashamed to say they live in Santa Ana. Finally, to my friends and family, thank you to Team Sarmiento for all your hard work in helping me realize this collective goal. Shout out to Carlos Jose, the Youth for Sarmiento Crew, the DPOC, SCIU Local 721, Unite Here Local 11, y todos los voluntarios que me acompañaron durante este camino largo. Espero que no me abandonen y que sigan trabajando conmigo en este nuevo capítulo de nuestra bella ciudad. To my mom, my wife, my sons Adrian and Diego, my daughter Dahlia, my sister Vicky, my sister Daisy, and countless other extended family. Gracias por el amor, apoyo, paciencia, inspiración que siempre me dan. Thank you once again, and I ask all of you to please be safe and take care of yourselves during these very dangerous times. Stay strong, Santa Ana. Thank you.
Congratulations, Papua, all the way from here at TOS Medical Center in Boston. I mean, of course, I wish I was there during your whole campaign if you're swearing it, but even with school and working at the hospital the whole time, I was supporting you as much as I could. Please know that. Santa Ana is in good hands, and I'm so proud to call you my dad and also to call you the mayor. I love you y te vuelvo pronto.
Mayor Sarmiento, on behalf of the young people of Santana, I want to extend my congratulations to you. It was an honor to volunteer for a campaign that deeply cared about the issues that Santana residents care about, like reducing homelessness, public health, creating safer neighborhoods, affordable housing, and most importantly, investing in our youth and in our future. I think that the future of Santana is incredibly bright, and I know that under your leadership and under the leadership of the new city council, we can reach great heights. I want to congratulate you, and I cannot wait to see the change that you will bring for Santana in years to come.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Elizabeth Martinez, soy líder comunitario en esta ciudad, y me complace mucho el poder darle la bienvenida y felicitar a nuestro nuevo alcalde de parte de la comunidad, este, al señor Sarmiento, Vicente Sarmiento, que va a ser nuestro nuevo alcalde. Él siempre ha trabajado con la comunidad, sobre todo con las personas que tienen, que no tienen un estatus legal en esta ciudad. Pienso que una sola persona no puede hacer la diferencia, pero si trabajamos en conjunto, organizaciones, líderes comunitarios y personas que nos representan, podemos tener un Santana mejor. Muchísimas gracias, bienvenido, y felicidades a él y a toda su familia, y muchas gracias.
Hi, I'm Paul Walsh, president of Coast Composites with a sizable manufacturing presence here in the city of Santa Ana, and I want to congratulate you, Vince, on your mayoral win. Really, really excited and happy for you and certainly for the community. I think your calm, practical approach is exactly what both the community and the business community needs in these challenging times. Best of luck to you. Really happy to see the win.
This is Ada Briseño, chair of the Democratic Party in Orange County and co-president of Unite Here Local 11, a union representing cooks, dishwashers, and room attendants. And we're here to congratulate Mayor-elect Sarmiento, city council member-elect Ty Phan, Jonathan Hernandez, and Jesse Lopez. We're excited for a new beginning. We want to congratulate you all, and we're looking forward to this new council standing for democratic values and working families in Santana. Congratulations. que no tienen un estatus legal en esta ciudad. Pienso que una sola persona no puede hacer la diferencia, pero si trabajamos en conjunto, organizaciones, líderes comunitarios y personas que nos representan, podemos tener un Santana mejor. Muchísimas gracias, bienvenido y felicidades a él y a toda su familia y muchas gracias.
Hi, I'm Paul Walsh, president of Coast Composites with a sizable manufacturing presence here in the city of San Ana. And I want to congratulate you, Vince, on your mayoral win. Really, really excited and happy for you and certainly for the community. I think your calm, practical approach is exactly what both the community and the business community needs in these challenging times. Best of luck to you. Really happy to see the win.
This is Ada Briseño, chair of the Democratic Party in Orange County and co-president of Unite Here Local 11, a union representing cooks, dishwashers, and room attendants. And we're here to congratulate Mayor-elect Sarmiento, City Council member-elect Thay Viet Phan, Jonathan Hernandez, and Jesse Lopez. We're excited for a new beginning. We want to congratulate you all, and we're looking forward to this new council standing for democratic values and working families in Santana. Congratulations.
Hello, Santa Ana. My name is Thay Viet Phan, and I'm proud and honored to serve as the first Vietnamese-American on the Santa Ana City Council. I know we have a lot of work ahead of us, whether it's to address the COVID-19 pandemic and its effects on our community, addressing the homelessness crisis, or dealing with the lack of affordable housing. I know we'll work together to arrive at positive solutions for all. Once again, thank you to the Santa Ana residents and congratulations to our mayor and my fellow council members.
To my Vietnamese community, xin kính chào quý vị. Tên tôi là Thái Việt Phan và Thái rất vinh dự và là người Mỹ gốc Việt đầu tiên làm nghị viên trong hội đồng thành phố Santana. Thái biết chúng ta có nhiều điều để giải quyết, cho dù về virus Corona, giúp người vô gia cư hoặc lo giá tiền nhà rất cao. Thái biết chúng ta sẽ đoàn kết và đưa ra các giải pháp tích cực cho cộng đồng. Một việc nữa, xin cảm ơn cư dân Santana và xin chúc mừng thị trường và nghị viên mới. Cảm ơn.
Rất số, nì khám nhôm chmô ờ ờ nghe rót, chia bê chiêp bơ rót luôn ở trong tì còng Santana. Ờ, nì khám nhôm xóm chun pho đà lờ ờ sa tơ ờ, tò còm xà mạ chật prak sa phì ba tham mai nèn nình thay viêt thán đài ban chơ rơ chia đâm nang ờ, khong tì còng Santana khong à nà đê. Ờ, nì khám nhôm biên mô tăn á phim, đài ban khơi nèn nình ờ chì chìa sa châm ró hai ban tơi chơ tàng mà khong nang khong ờ bơ rót khong tì còng Santana. Ờ, nì khám nhôm xóm chun pho đà lờ ờ sa tơ ờ, tham mai đài đài ban chơ tàng đê. Ờ, năng bê chiêp bơ rót tàng ờ khong tì còng Santana. Ờ, biên xóm phe phlờ ờ sì ca dai xóm pro pe vê đê chia phót phì chung chung gư COVID nan thin tàng ờ khôn đê. Ờ, nì khám nhôm xóm ờ khôn đài ban ờ chen chen nì khám nhôm ao chun pho thod khong vi tơ ôm vui đê. Nì khám nhôm ờ khôn năng chung ríp đê.
Ờ, bá xóm chung ríp số, xem bát chmô tay bú. Ờ, xem bát ban mờ ru hơ nay khong tì còng Santana đê, yêp phét bún châm hao. Xem xóm ờ ờ sa tơ đà lờ nèn nình thay việt thán đài ban chóp chàu chơ tàng chia xà mạ chật khong prak sa khong nia nà đê. Xem xung khom tha nèn nình năng tơ tơ ban phìp chúc chia xăm rạp đâm nang tham mai chia xà mạ chật khong prak sa khong đê. Ờ, xem xung khom tha nèn nình năng chun pho chun nai chui ao sa khung khmái, năng sa khung đà tay đà tay tiết nèn khung tì còng Santana. Nình ga ru khun khôn đê, nình phìp răng mòm. Năng gàn tay nình xóm phìp lờ tàng ờ khôn đê. Xóm ờ khôn đài ban chia rù khem ao chun pho khong vi tơ ôm đê.
Hello, this is Katana, executive director of the Cambodia-Lupian Community Center, a nonprofit organization serving San Ana residents for over 40 years. I would like to send my sincere congratulations and best wishes to Councilmember-elect Thay Viet Phan on being newly elected to San Ana City Council. I wish you all success and look forward to partnering with you, other city council members, and the mayor in serving our Cambodian and other diverse community members in San Ana. Thank you for inviting us to join this video.
Hello, I am Gia Lee, immediate past chair and current board member of the Vietnamese-American Chamber of Commerce. On behalf of VHSOC, I would like to extend a warm congratulations to the newly-elected mayor and council members of the city of San Ana, especially Thay Viet Phan, the first Vietnamese-American on the dais. We could not be prouder of the rich diversity of the new council, which reflects today's American demography. We have full confidence that the council will do the job with the best interest of every constituent at heart. We also want to congratulate the voters for speaking up. No matter how you voted, your vote counted. Again, congratulations to all.
Hi, everyone. This is Jesse Lopez proudly representing Ward Three. As the year comes to an end, I want to thank you for everything that you do for our collective well-being. I also want to thank you for supporting our campaign this past year. I am thrilled to be at your service, and please know that whatever you need, we are here to serve you. I hope you have happy holidays and a wonderful new year.
Hola, soy Jesse Lopez, orgullosamente representando el Distrito Tres. Les agradezco todo lo que han hecho por nosotros este año y cualquier cosa que necesiten, por favor, sepan que estamos aquí para apoyarlos. Les deseo un año nuevo bueno y felices fiestas. Gracias.
We are so excited to see new leadership take the helm here in our city of San Ana. Our family goes back multiple generations, and we want to especially congratulate Jesse Lopez and her entire campaign for bringing the community together. We know that she'll be a voice of our values, helping to elevate issues like having more open space for our children, particularly in this challenging time, addressing important, critical issues like how we help support the unhoused here in our city, and of course, navigating this pandemic. Again, we want to give a special congratulations to Jesse and your team. We are here to... So excited to see you lead, and we're here to support you along the way.
I want to congratulate our new mayor and city council from the city of San Ana. My name is Martha Lina Abiles from the Riverview Neighborhood, and particularly congratulate new councilmember Jesse Lopez, who is our new representative in Ward Three. I had the pleasure of meeting her while she was running for office. So excited to have a young Latina who I know is going to listen to our concerns and be an incredible leader for us here in Ward Three and in the city of San Ana. Thank you and congratulations.
Congratulations, Jesse. I am so excited for you. You are going to be amazing. It feels so good to know that we have a strong, intelligent woman on our city council that I know is going to bring about incredible change for everyone. Know you have our 100% support during this time. You are going to be amazing. Felicidades, congratulations, abrazos. We're so excited for you. Huge hugs.
Hey, Jesse, congratulations on winning, councilmember for San Ana. I'm so excited for you. I know you're going to do great things for this community and fight for the people that live here and make it a better place for all of us to live. I'm really happy that I got to vote for you and campaign for you, and I really can't wait to see what you accomplish and how much better you make this community. So, good luck and congratulations, and I can't wait.
Hello, Jesse, and everybody else out there watching the video. So, congratulations for your victory. I know that there's a whole set of things and issues that are going to be coming before the city council over the next couple of years. You know, just one foot in front of the other, and I'm sure that you guys are all going to do well, especially Jesse. Congratulations, and councilmember Lopez, congratulations on the hard work that you put into the campaign, the hard work that you're going to keep putting into serving the residents of San Ana. And yeah, just look forward to seeing what happens over the next four years, and I'm sure that you and the new council will have an interesting experience up there regardless of what happens. But I wish you all the best and look forward to seeing, yeah, you on the dais. See you all.
San Ana, my name is Jonathan Ryan Hernandez, and it is my honor to serve the people of Ward Five. My family's called Ward Five home for as long as I can remember. Having been here since the 1950s, growing up next to El Salvador Park, I'm a product of San Ana Unified School District schools. I understand the excellence that exists within our community, and I plan on helping invest and develop more of it. From the rich cultural history, from the Black community to the Brown community to the API community that have brought people together, I believe that this community is a community that is worth investing in. I believe that our parks and recreational centers should be safe havens so that we can develop families and children. I believe that city-wide Wi-Fi is future-proofing the city of San Ana. I believe that we should remove barriers to education and increase access to early childhood education programs. And more importantly, I believe that we need to create more pathways for college, not prison. My story is the Santa Ana story, and I am looking to bring people together. And that is why it is my honor and my privilege to say thank you to the voters who used their voice to create change this election and elected the people. And it is my duty and my honor to serve you. Thank you very much.
Hey, hi. My name is Daniel Lyndham, and I want to give a big shout out and a congratulations to Jonathan Hernandez, who was elected to represent Ward Five in the city of San Ana. Jonathan and I grew up in the same neighborhood, and so I'm proud of you, bro. I'm looking forward to what you're going to bring to this city. Also, I want to give a big shout out and congratulations to the whole city council, the new members, and the members who got reelected, and just looking forward to the great work that you're going to do for the city of San Ana coming up.
Hi, I'm Alan Wu. I'm with San Ana Unidos. I'm a businessman and resident of San Ana. And we just selected a new city council and mayor, and we're looking for a great, great new transformation from this young, vibrant, innovative new city council. My friend Jonathan Ryan Hernandez is part of that generation in the 25-year-old category who's a single father, who's looking forward to lifting up the voices of those that have been unheard. He's paying attention and listening to us neighborhood leaders, and he wants to bring what we want to bring to San Ana, and thus change for the better. And congratulations, guys. Go team!
Hi, I'm Valery Mescola, vice president of Santa Ana Unified Board of Education. I'd like to thank Councilman Hernandez for inviting me to participate in this video. I'd like to welcome Jesse Lopez as the new councilwoman, Thay Pham as the new councilwoman, and Mayor Vincent Sarmiento. Our city is embarking on a brand-new council, young and innovative, and we're looking forward to all the great things that they're going to do for our youth, for our community, and to make this a prosperous city. As a board member of Santa Ana Unified, I am looking forward to working together with the newly-elected council members and the council as a whole to make education first again in this city. We can work together to bring citywide Wi-Fi. We can work together to make education a beautiful experience for our children. So I am looking forward to the new council and to our new councilman Jonathan Hernandez. Again, thank you for inviting me to participate in this video. I welcome all the new council members and the staff that will be joining us. And please, everyone, stay safe, wear your mask, practice social distancing, and things will get back to normal. But it will be better than normal because of what we've been going through together as a city. And I'm looking forward to the leadership of our new council working alongside with our school district to make things better for our community. Thank you.
I can't emphasize enough how excited I am for my new colleagues to join me on the San Ana City Council. To our new mayor and the new council members, congratulations on your election. This is an exciting time for our city, and I look forward in working alongside all of you to move our city forward and in the right direction. The only sad part is, is that I'm no longer the young one. Just going to sting a little, but you know what? It's okay. I'll get over it. I'm looking forward to it. Welcome aboard.
I want to congratulate you on being elected to the San Ana City Council. It is truly an honor and a privilege to serve our community. And I'm looking forward to working with each and every one of you and collaborating with you to tackle the challenges that lie ahead of us and to continue to make the Golden City shine. With that, congratulations on being elected to the San Ana City Council.
This is Councilmember Nalida Mendoza. Congratulations to Mayor-elect Vincent Sarmiento, Councilmember Thay Pham, Councilmember Jessica Lopez, and Councilmember Jonathan Hernandez. I am very proud to be on the council with you. I look forward to sharing of our vast knowledge and experience in our respective areas of expertise. I will share the knowledge that I have gained throughout the years as an elected official, and I will expect to get some of that knowledge from you so that together we all can work towards getting quality services to the constituents. Congratulations to our new mayor and our council members.
Thank you. I hereby convene the 2020 through 2022 new mayor and 2020 through 2024 members of the council for Wards One, Three, and Five.
Well, this is, you know, certainly an odd place to be because I'm only a seat away from the mayor's chair. But that, those few feet or those inches from this seat to that seat is a very long distance and a very long path. So I just want to thank the outgoing mayor, Pulido, councilmembers Viegas and Solorio for your work. I think all of us acknowledged, and you heard many of the members of the public, thank you for your service. Again, I've always believed that there is no more noble a cause than serving the public, so we thank you and your families for allowing you to serve. I do want to just make a few housekeeping notes before we move along and have the clerk call roll. There are three members of the council here in chambers. We are separated by Plexiglas. There are a handful of staff, so we are compliant with CDC guidelines. We know that these are very, very difficult times, and normally, we would be convening this meeting to a celebration at one of our venues in the city, and we would be together, and we would be sharing moments of, you know, joy and happiness and, you know, saying goodbye to friends and saying hello to others. But the reality is, is that we have to make sure that we are safe. So we certainly would like it to be done a different way, but, you know, this is where we are, and I'm glad that everybody is taking the proper precautions, and I want to thank you all for your patience in this. So I want to, you know, just tell my councilmembers and colleagues who are here and those new councilmembers that are joining us that we will have an opportunity to close with some comments at the end of the meeting. So what I'll do is I'll move along just to conduct some business so we can get to that. And it is really my pleasure to ask the clerk to conduct roll call for the first time of the 2020-2022 mayor and members of this new city council. Madam Clerk, will you please call roll of the city council?
Councilmember Becerra?
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Lopez?
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember Peñalosa?
Here.
Councilmember Phan?
Here.
And Mayor Sarmiento?
Here. Boy, that does sound odd because, you know, you know, for me, yeah, I think Councilmember Peñalosa was saying he's not the younger, the youngest person here. I overnight became a very old councilmember compared to all the new, present and incoming councilmembers. So I'll get used to it, but, you know, bear with me, young colleagues. So we do have one item of business that we're going to take care of before we adjourn the meeting and make closing comments. It is the election of the mayor pro tem for the 2020 cycle. And I just want to begin by making some, you know, just some background comments on it. The mayor pro tem title is normally a two-year term. It is, it doesn't hold any more value than any other council member up on this dais. It simply is, when the mayor is not present to preside over the meeting, the mayor pro tem presides over that meeting. And, you know, when there's a public event and the mayor is unable to be there, the mayor pro tem would go ahead and fill in. So there is no more value. Your vote is not worth anymore, nor is mine. We're all equally weighted here, and that is a good thing. That is what our democracy is about. And so what I want to do right now is to make sure that we understand that context because I know we have new members of the council that are with us. So I will begin by opening it up for nominations for mayor pro tem. The only thing I would caveat is if everybody's open to this. I know we've had two-year terms in the past, and that's just been an informal policy. You know, and we, I think it might not be a bad thing to maybe reduce that to a year if that's okay with everybody. And that way, everybody gets a chance to cycle in. I've always thought that that was fair. And also, you know, what we also did in the past is just make sure that those who've served the longest, you know, have a chance to serve as mayor pro tem based upon experience and tenure, and then we just cycle through everybody, and everybody gets a chance to serve as mayor pro tem. Again, when I served, you know, it took me a while to go through the cycle. I was, I think, the last in line. I didn't feel any more special when I got it, but I think it's an experience that everybody should have. So with that, I'll go ahead and open it up for nominations for the mayor pro tem position, and it will require a second, so I'll open it up for discussion now.
Mayor Sarmiento?
Yes, I'll recognize Councilmember Becerra.
I'd like to go ahead and nominate our colleague, Councilmember David Penalosa, to serve as our mayor pro tem.
Mayor Sarmiento?
Mayor Sarmiento, this is Councilmember Phan. I would second that, and I definitely agree with your comments regarding the one-year term.
Great, so we have a motion by... Go ahead.
Mayor Sarmiento, I would also like to cast my vote for Councilmember Peñalosa. This is Jonathan.
Great, so let's do this. Since we have a motion and a second on the floor, I'll go ahead and, unless there are any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and close the nominations for the mayor pro tem position and bring it back to the clerk for roll call.
Councilmember Becerra?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, yes, sir.
I believe you have to ask me if I accept the nomination.
Well, that's true. You could always back out, that's for sure. Go ahead.
I'm joking, but I just wanted to also reiterate what you mentioned. If you remember back in June, when we tried to bring forward some charter changes, I believe it was you, me, and Councilmember Becerra, and we unfortunately fell a couple votes short. But we wanted to make the mayor pro tem, you know, move it from two years to one year because that is only fair. I mean, it's, 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 it's fair that we all get the opportunity to serve in this position and role alongside the mayor. So with that, I'm happy to agree to that one-year term, and I'm happy to accept the nomination. And yeah, that's it.
Great, thank you for those comments, Councilmember. Are there any other comments from members of the council? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and bring it back to the clerk for roll call.
Councilmember Becerra?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Peñalosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Phan?
Yes.
Mayor Sarmiento?
Yes. Thank you for that, colleagues. Now, moving along, I want to announce the result that the new mayor pro tem for 2021 is Councilmember David Peñalosa. Thank you for accepting to serve, and thank you, council members, for conducting your first matter of business together. I want to bring it back now to the City Council so we can make our closing comments. These comments are always at the tail end of the meeting. We close session with these, and it gives you an opportunity to go ahead and talk about, you know, anything that you feel you need to mention. We will be doing this at the close of every meeting, and this is the first time that I will be calling on each of you. So it's, it's an honor of mine to go ahead and cycle through the new council. And I'll begin with, and before I start, Madam City Manager, you are going to be the last person to speak before we adjourn, if that's okay. So I'm just going to kind of flip that. I'm going to go to the council first and have you close after we make comments. So let me begin with Councilmember Phil Becerra.
Thank you, Mayor Sarmiento. Now that Ms. Phan, Ms. Lopez, and Mr. Hernandez have been officially sworn in, I can now say, welcome, council members. And also to you, Mayor Sarmiento, congratulations, and it's great to have you conducting the meetings now. We have a lot of work ahead of us, and I'm optimistic that with the diverse experiences and backgrounds of each council member, that we should be able to tackle any problem and improve any situation that comes in front of us. But that will only happen if we work together, collaborate, and communicate with each other. We are blessed on the City Council to have our city's great legacy to build upon, such as the monumental efforts of William Spurgeon and James McFadden, which led to the creation of Orange County and Santa Ana becoming its county seat. And Uncle Billy Spurgeon's efforts to lay out the infrastructure of which much of it our city relies on today. I'm looking forward to working with each of you to take care of our infrastructure and make sure that we provide the best municipal services at a cost that does not overburden our most vulnerable. I'm also optimistic with the youth and energy on our new council that we will dream even bigger than our predecessors and also live up to the role of being the county seat of Orange County that our forefathers worked to bestow upon our golden city. With that, thank you, Mayor Sarmiento.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'll go ahead and call on Councilmember Jonathan Hernandez.
Yes, I want to start by saying thank you to everybody who used their voice this election to create change. It is an exciting time to look at the city of Santa Ana and know that we have people that have the residents' interests at their heart. And having grown up in the city council chambers, I've always used my voice to create change, and I look forward to doing that at a much larger scale for the constituents and the people on Ward Five. And as the youngest member of the council, let this be a reminder to the young people that use their voice this election. You do matter. Your power is validated, and si se pudo. And together, we will continue to create change. And with that, I will pass it to Jesse Lopez.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Hernandez. Let me go ahead and call on our new colleague, Councilmember Jesse Lopez. Jesse, go ahead, and the floor is yours. Councilmember, are you on mute? We can't hear anything on this end. Councilmember Lopez? Madam Clerk, is a council member connected still?
I just received a message from Councilmember Lopez. She accidentally hung up, but she's calling right back in. Did you want to proceed?
Yeah, why don't we go ahead? As soon as she comes back on, Madam Clerk, go ahead and let me know. Councilmember Nalida Mendoza, why don't you go ahead and make your closing comments?
Thank you, Mayor Sarmiento. I first would like an opportunity to thank our outgoing council members, Jose, Solorio, Juan Viegas, and the mayor, Miguel Pulido. It's been a pleasure working with you, not just these last few months, but seeing you in action throughout the years. There's been some progress in our city and great advancement. And now we are into a different era in Santa Ana, and you helped to bring us to this kind of level, and the city of Santa Ana will continue to be better. So I just wanted to say thank you for all those years and continue to be nearby so that we can continue to communicate and obtain your leadership and guidance with your experience as a city council member and previous mayor. And to the new council and to Mayor Sarmiento, my colleague is correct, Phil Becerra, I'm saying that we must work together and collaborate to make Santa Ana one of the best cities in the entire Orange County. There is many, much work for us to do ahead, but we're not strangers to challenges or hardships. And so I think that we have an incredible progressive body of people here who will work together rather than against each other. Because I have met all of you, and I know that the interest is genuine in representing our respective boards in a manner that is professional and inclusive and to bring forth those services of high-quality life to our constituents. So I welcome you with open arms, and I am tremendously honored to be serving with such a terrific group of people. Congratulations to all of you and welcome to this wonderful city of Santa Ana.
Thank you, Councilmember. I think Councilmember Jesse Lopez is back online with us. Councilmember Lopez, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Sarmiento. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. You know, I was just saying that words cannot fully express my deep gratitude to all of the families in Ward Three who believed in our campaign and supported us for our journey. When I decided to run for office, my desire was rooted in my commitment of wanting something better for my neighbors as much as I wanted it for my own family. And the opportunity to serve as your councilwoman is an immense responsibility and a huge honor. Ward Three is comprised of communities that I know and that I love. And I will carry with me the conversations I've had with Ward Three families always. I firmly believe that policy is a tool to implement equity on a systemic level, and I remain committed to working with my colleagues on issues important to everyday people, like improving support for our public schools, providing relief to our swamp businesses and our working families, doing our best to combat climate change, and helping the renters of our city and getting the COVID-19 pandemic under control. This victory belongs to the people of Santa Ana who believe in compassion and not hate, equity and not divisiveness, and opportunities for all. I'd also would like to take this opportunity to thank my family and my team for supporting me every step of the way. And moving forward, we will face tough challenges together, but we will overcome them together. And I will always work hard for you and with you. And finally, my mom is not able to be with us tonight because she is in El Salvador. So saludos a mi familia en El Salvador. Again, from the bottom of my heart, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lopez. Councilmember David Peñalosa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sarmiento. I just wanted to also take an opportunity to thank former mayor Pulido and former council members Viegas and Solorio for your service and dedication to our community, and wish you the best of luck in your future endeavors. And with that, I wanted to, you know, give a nice, warm welcome to our new colleagues, Councilwoman Phan, Councilwoman Lopez, and Councilmember Hernandez. Welcome to all three of you. Mr. Mayor Sarmiento, welcome in your new role. I'm excited for what we could all do for our city and work together in moving it forward. I know that we, a lot of, a lot of things are possible if we just put our hard work and love for our city together. One little tip that I would give my new colleagues, specifically the council members, is, you know, this is, this is a lot of work. And, you know, having full-time jobs and full-time council dedication, you know, I want to just express the need of all of you to, every once in a while, you know, take a day, just take a day and churn off your devices, disconnect, unplug, go for a hike, go for, go to the beach, go for a jog. Your mental health is extremely important, and it's gonna, you know, your health is, put your health first as well as that of our communities, but just take time for yourself every once in a while because it is a lot of work, but I'm sure you're all going to handle just fine. And wish you guys the best of luck in your new role. With that said, I want to thank all of you for your trust and vote in electing me as your mayor pro tem. I hope I don't disappoint any of you and looking forward to working together. And just one final thought to our residents listening. I know there was a text message that came in earlier today, an emergency alert from the state. You know, don't panic, you know, continue precautions, wear your masks, social distance, continue to be safe, and remember that there are resources available provided by the city. And if you have any questions in any of those resources, please visit www.santa-anna.org/covid19 for more information on those. With that said, Mr. Mayor, I am complete.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Peñalosa, I think I misspoke when I first recognized you during these comments, so thank you for those, for those words. Councilmember Ty Phan, please.
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to take this time to congratulate again Mayor Sarmiento and Councilmembers Lopez and Hernandez. Thank you to all the residents of Santa Ana, but particularly the residents of Ward One for your support and your trust. You know, the 2020 election really showed all of us that representation matters, community support matters. And I'm just so honored to be the first Vietnamese-American and the first Asian-American woman to serve as a Santa Ana council member. And I know I'll continue to work with all residents to make sure we engage our diverse communities and build bridges as we navigate out of this pandemic. I want to, of course, thank my husband, Pov, for always being a wonderful partner, ready to jump in and onboard to support me in every adventure. I thank you to my friends and family who encouraged me and frankly fed me during this race. And of course, thank you to the volunteers and residents who put in their time and energy in making our win a reality. I definitely want to thank you to staff for moving quickly to accommodate these new, ever-changing COVID rules to ensure we have a safe installation process. I honestly know it's not easy. And I really want to take this moment because I'd be remiss if I didn't think and share a bit about the incredible woman who swore me in in the video, Kim Lu In. So like me, Kim is a first-generation Vietnamese refugee and a USC alumna. She's an immigration attorney who has dedicated her life's work to advocating for refugees, asylum, and victims of state-sponsored persecution, torture, domestic violence, and human trafficking. She's a champion of Asian-Americans in public service and the law and never hesitates to mentor and uplift and encourage young people who seek to make the world a better, more equitable place. Her philanthropic work includes forming the Los Angeles Chef's for Human Rights with her spouse, chef and co-restaurantor Bryant In, which raises funds for the program for torture victims and other nonprofits. So I'm incredibly proud to know her and proud that she was able to swear me in. And finally, I'd like to conclude to say that I don't take this duty as a council member lightly, and I pledge to dedicate, to be dedicated, to be thoughtful, and to be considerate as a public servant. So I'm really excited to be a part of this new era in Santa Ana, especially with a millennial majority, very proud of that. And I know we'll work collaboratively together to help the city just move past this pandemic and really ensure a healthier, safer, and more prosperous Santa Ana. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Phan. Boy, it really sounds good to call all these new folks council members. So welcome to all of you. And, you know, I simply want to say, I, you know, to the members of the public who called in and spoke, I know there were many of you, and, you know, I think that's the beauty that we have here in Santa Ana, that we have so many people that are engaged and want to speak and want to speak their heart. And I think they spoke. Something that I noticed that was a little different from other times, there was a sense of hope, and I heard that coming through in every comment. And that's a good thing because I think we have a moment right now to be able to capture that hope, do good things with it. I think we have a city council that is, you know, vested right now with confidence and trust to be able to address the issues that many of us saw firsthand and have known firsthand. So, you know, the diversity on this council now is really interesting, hearing, you know, some of the council members talk about, you know, Councilmember, you know, Lopez talk about her family from El Salvador, you know, Councilmember Phan talk about her family and her roots in Vietnam. And, you know, obviously, we have members of the council that have, you know, Mexican origin, and you have a Bolivian on here as well. We're few but mighty, they say. So I want to just take a few moments, if the council will indulge me, just for a few comments in Spanish, because we have a large audience of Bolivians that are watching, and we have a four-hour difference, so it's about 1:00 in the morning over there, and I want them to go to bed. So, para los bolivianos compatriotas que están escuchando y sintonizando desde la paz, Santa Cruz, Cochabamba, y todas las ciudades de Bolivia, les agradezco, les mando un fuerte abrazo desde su ciudad hermana aquí, Santana, California. Les agradezco de parte de alguien que nunca se va a olvidar sus raíces, y aquí siempre van a tener su casa, con brazos abiertos aquí en Santana. Gracias a todos. Bringing it back to the council, I just simply want to, you know, thank everybody who participated in the election. I was really stunned to see that almost 80% of our voters go out and cast a ballot, and that's very rare. Over 95,000 folks voted, and they voted, you know, early. And that was amazing because, again, looking at the numbers of how many people voted by mail, dropped off their ballots at vote boxes, all those things under some very precarious conditions, it's a... conditions, it's a testament to people's interest in making sure that their city government works. To our employees, I want to thank you all. I want to thank you for everything that you have done while I've been on the council as a council member. And I want to thank you again in advance for everything that you're going to do with this new city council. I know it's going to be different. You all have probably, none of you know any other mayor except for outgoing former mayor Pulido. So to the extent that I will serve hopefully as a bridge from the, you know, former council and past experience to, you know, this new council, I want to be able to do that. I certainly, I promise you one thing, I won't stay 26 years. I can guarantee you that. And I want to give a nod to some of my former colleagues that served with me earlier in my council career. Salteina Jero, David Benavides, Michelle Martinez, Roman Reyna. We kind of came in as a class together and so we, you know, we couldn't have done many of the things that we're experiencing now had it not been for some groundwork that was laid way, way back then. We all know we're going to be facing, you know, consequences of this pandemic for at least, you know, into the next year and probably in the next second quarter of next year. But I'm hopeful. I really am hopeful that we finally see that we are going to be solving this and under our watch, we're going to, you know, do all the great things that we want to do. Send our kids back to school, open up our businesses, get people back to work, and more than anything, make our community healthy. So finally, all I want to mention to all of my colleagues and staff and everybody, you know, in the city, let us, you know, just feel blessed as well because, especially for those of us who serve, this is a privilege. And we never have, we should never forget that, you know, there is a commitment, there is a covenant that we have with the public that we have to listen to them and we have to fulfill our responsibilities and, you know, with integrity, with respect. And, you know, for those of you who are up here, we're going to spend a lot of time together. You know, I've seen former councilmembers who've served with me, I've seen their children grow up and they've seen mine grow up. And we've become friends to this day. And we will share things that are very difficult and, you know, we will have to make tough decisions, but I want us to enjoy each other. I want us to enjoy each other's company and be, be in the moment, right? There's no reason why we can't, you know, make tough decisions and at the same time realize, hey, this is our extended family here. So I hope that that's the spirit in which we all come in. That's something I want to hopefully, you know, have all of us take part in. And with that, I will go ahead and end my comments and turn it over to the city manager to see if she has any comments before I adjourn the meeting.
Just very briefly, sir, I want to congratulate you as our new mayor. I'd also like to congratulate our new, congratulate our new mayor pro tem along with the three councilmembers, Hernandez, Lopez, and Fan. I'm really excited and I'm looking forward to working with each of you to accomplish your policy initiatives. That's all. Thank you.
Great, thank you for that.
Mayor Sarmiento, this is Councilmember Jonathan Hernandez.
Yes, Councilmember.
I did want to, I did want to bring something up and I figured now would be the right opportunity to do that. Admiss the pandemic, I know that there's a lot of people that are struggling in our community. There's a lot of essential workers that are at risk and due to this pandemic, I wanted to make a recommendation that all executive directors expand telecommunications to the extent possible and including in the Community Development Agency. I understand that the state EDD employees in our work center have been allowed to work remotely due to a city COVID case at the work center while our city employees were not equally protected. So I just wanted to suggest that we do everything we can to minimize the spread of COVID as a city and allow those who can remotely work from home to do that.
Great, thank you for that, that comment, Councilmember Hernandez. Hearing no other comments and seeing no other comments up here, I simply want to go ahead and say thank you to everybody who tuned in and listened and saw the video. Thank you for the video. That was an amazing, amazing work. So to the staff that worked on it, thank you to all of you for that hard work. And I will now, for the first time under this new council, adjourn the meeting till December 15, 2020. Thank you. Good night.